Hey, Let's Talk Gillette. Welcome to the Let's Talk Gillette Holiday Special is kind of how I've been thinking of this. My goal this year is to sit down with all the council members and kind of talk to them about how the last year has gone and what their hopes are for the future. And I also have a very special holiday lightning round where I've written some festive questions to kind of just have a little fun, I guess, while the council members are here. And very first, we've got City Councilman Jim West from Ward 1. What would you say was the best part of being on the city council in this last year?
Well, I'd have to say being as new to the city council was getting to know the other council members and the city staff and kind of more of the inner workings of the city. It was really interesting, you know, even as a citizen, we know all these things happen, but you don't really know how they happen. And so as a new councilman, I got to spend some time going through all the departments and learning the people and all the different people that make things happen in our community. And that was very impressive.
All right. And of all the things the city council did, all of the projects, all of the activities and things we do, which would you say you are most proud of?
Well, I'd say it's kind of a conglomeration of a handful of things. It was kind of a rough start to the year, new mayor, new council, losing our city administrator, having to find a new city administrator. So I was really proud at the staff and the council and the mayor, how we came together and unified to get through some of those difficult things and keep the city in the best interest of what needs to be done for our community at the heart of the issue and not let the drama play out any worse than it could have.
Sure. And what are your hopes for next year on the city council?
Well, I'm hoping to see some of our good capital projects start to take place, like the early overpass and I mean, obviously we're going to finish the wastewater treatment plant, but I just want to continue to see our community move forward and making it a very good place to live. And as we become more economically diverse, young families want to move here and raise their families here because of the activities and different things we have in our community.
All right. And before we kind of wrap up our regular questions and move on to the holiday lightning round, is there anything you'd like to say to the citizens of Gillette?
Just that, you know, I'm really proud to be part of this community and we have a good diverse community and sometimes emotions get the best of people, but at the end of the day, everyone seems to come together to take care of each other. And it makes me proud to be a Gillette citizen and to be part of the whole process. Yeah, I'd like to make sure to wish everybody a special holidays and happy new year and may you be God blessed and be with family and loved ones through the Christmas holidays.
And are you prepared for our special holiday lightning round?
I am.
So this is just like our regular lightning round, except I've given all the questions kind of a festive theme.
Okay.
Eggnog or hot chocolate?
Uh, hot chocolate.
All right. Gifts, giving or receiving?
I'd much rather give.
Sure. When you get presents, do you try to guess what your presents are? Or do you like to maintain the surprise for when you open them? Or to put it another way, shaking or not shaking?
Definitely a shaker.
Oh, yeah.
I don't do well with surprises really. And my mother and father growing up, they would have to tape every edge of every present. So I couldn't get an inside version of what I'm getting. So I'm a shaker.
All right. And when you do get to open the presents, do you tear through the wrapping paper or do you save it carefully?
It depends on who I'm opening presents with, but for the most part I am a wrapper destroyer.
Sure.
When I'm around my stepmother, you have to open nicely, fold the paper and give it back to her.
Oh, my gosh. Which of Santa's reindeer would you say is your favorite? If you need help remembering, they are Dasher, Dancer, Prancer, Vixen, Comet, Cupid, Donner, Blitzen, and if you recall, the most famous reindeer of all, Rudolph.
I'd have to say that Dancer is my favorite reindeer.
Sure.
Keeps the festivities and happiness going on.
Sure. All right. Home for the holidays or far away you roam?
I would much rather be at home.
Sure. What would you like for Christmas this year?
Uh, I want, I wanted to see my whole family, be able to get together in peace and harmony. And it sounds like I might get that this year. So
Oh, good.
As my kids grow up and get married and move away, it's harder and harder for that. So I just want togetherness for Christmas.
All right. And Christmas dinner, turkey or ham?
Uh, ham for sure.
All right. Do you make New Year's resolutions?
I don't.
No? All right. And on New Year's, do you stay up until midnight or do you fall asleep early?
I fall asleep early anymore. I used to stay up late, but the past few years it's been sleepy time is normal.
Sure. All right. Well, thank you so much, Councilman West, for coming and participating in our holiday podcast.
Yes, sir. Thanks for having me. Hope you have a great holiday.
You too. Up next, we're going to sit down with Ward 1 City Councilwoman Trish Sammanson. So to start with, what would you say was the best part of being on the city council in the last year?
You know, Jason, there was a lot of good things about city council this year, I think. But I think probably one of the best parts is I really think we have a great city council. We all get along, even if we don't disagree. I think that we've brought an element of transparency, an element of getting things done, moving forward. And we also have a lot of good conversation at city council meetings now. And so I would say that I think that's probably the best part of being on city council.
Sure. All right. And what thing that the city did, what project or initiative or whatever that the city didn't last year, would you say you were most proud of?
You know, I'm going to kind of circle back to the first answer I had. I think we did a lot of great things this year. We had the housing study, we're doing the comprehensive plan. We've also passed a lot of infrastructure, streets, street projects, things like that. But again, I think I'm most proud of how city council has just come together and we just have transparency. There hasn't been a lot of drama. We get along, even though we don't all vote the same way or agree on everything. And we have a lot of great conversations. So I think this is just a really great group of people and I really enjoy working with all of them and I'm proud of all of our accomplishments this last year. So
Good. What are your hopes for next year?
You know, next year, I would just like to continue on with the work when we got together as a group and we listed all of the things that were most important. And I would like to continue to move forward on that and just to start to look at those items again and just to keep moving forward on the items that we've listed as most important.
Sure. The city council goals that the council set. Before we kind of wrap up the regular questions and move into our holiday lightning round, is there anything you'd like to say to the citizens of Gillette?
Yes, I would. You know, it's a holiday season and you know, everybody thinks that the holidays are just full of joy and happiness and good things. But you know me, I am such an advocate for mental health and I think the holidays is probably one of the most difficult times for people, whether it's they're alone or they're grieving or they don't have enough money. There's a lot of combination of things that can just make the holidays really difficult. So I would just like to just give a little inspiration to the citizens of Gillette that struggle with the holidays and just remind them that it's only a season. That grief, that loneliness, that doesn't go on forever. So this is just a season, just like everything else in our lives and that if you need something, if you need help, or if you're just feeling down, just to reach out to a friend or reach out to a counselor or reach out to our wonderful numbers that we have, the text 741741 or the Wyoming 988 number. So that's what I would like to say to the citizens of Gillette is just give them hope to get through this holiday season, no matter how hard it is.
Sure.
And I would also just wish all of our citizens a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. And I hope that this holiday season brings you many blessings.
All right. Perfect. So that brings us to our holiday lightning round. It's just like the regular lightning round, except I've given all of the questions kind of a festive twist. Are you ready?
Yes.
All right. Eggnog or hot chocolate?
Eggnog, but it has to be my eggnog homemade.
Oh, sure. Of course. Gifts, giving or receiving?
Giving, definitely.
When you get gifts, do you try and guess what they are on the inside? Or do you like to be surprised? Or to put it another way, shaking or not shaking?
I'm not shaking and I love being surprised.
Sure. And when you get gifts, do you tear the wrapping paper open right away? Or do you kind of undo the wrapping carefully so you can save it for later?
If it's ugly paper, I just tear it. But if it's pretty paper, I try to save it.
Sure. All right. Which of Santa's reindeer would you say was your favorite? If you need help remembering, they are Dasher, Dancer, Prancer, Vixen, Comet, Cupid, Donner, Blitzen, and if you recall, the most famous reindeer of all, Rudolph.
I love Rudolph because he's different and he overcame adversity.
Sure. Home for the holidays or far away you roam?
I don't mind staying home, but we spent a Christmas in Mexico one year and it was probably one of the best Christmases that we had. So I'd have to say it just depends.
Sure. All right. And what would you like for Christmas this year?
I would like to rest. And sleep in. And you know, I would just like, you know, in the grand scheme of things, I would like peace on earth. I know that that's a big ask, but that's probably the one thing that I would love.
Mm-hmm. All right. Uh, Christmas dinner, turkey or ham?
Prime rib.
Oh.
Sorry, Jason.
Oh, no. No, on reflection, I think I would also prefer prime rib to turkey or ham.
Yeah, smoked prime rib, to be specific.
All right. Do you make New Year's resolutions?
Yes, and I flop every single year.
And on New Year's Eve, do you stay up until midnight or do you fall asleep early?
I fall asleep and I watch the ball drop early back east.
Sure. Yeah.
Cause it's midnight somewhere, right?
Yeah, it's the new year somewhere.
Yep, yep.
All right. Well, thank you so much for coming in for our special holiday podcast.
Thank you, Jason. I appreciate you doing this. Have a Merry Christmas.
You too. Welcome back to our Let's Talk Gillette Holiday Special episode. Right now I'm sitting down with City Council Ward 2 Councilman Tim Karzrude. Are you ready?
I am.
All right. What would you say was the best part of being on the city council in the past year?
I would just say that the best part of being on city council in this last year has just been how this council has been able to really come together and, you know, become a strong group, a strong council.
All right. And what thing that the city did, would you say you're most proud of?
I'm going to say right now, the thing I'm the most proud of is the seriousness that we took, the people's request to just be open and the things that we did in council chambers, when sometimes it's not easy, when maybe normally we would have gone into an executive session. So I just love the openness that we have instilled in this council this year.
Sure. Transparency.
Absolutely transparency.
All right. And what are your hopes for next year?
Obviously to continue to keep this transparency up. But I think the big thing for this next year is, you know, we've got the wheels rolling towards diversifying our economy. I think we are on a really strong line of being able to hopefully bring some more industrial projects that definitely goes side by side with our oil and coal, coal specifically. But yeah, to just be able to diversify that economy in that way.
All right. And before we wrap up our regular questions and move on to our special holiday lightning round, is there anything you'd like to say to the citizens of Gillette?
I think the one thing I would like to say is just thank you for being a part of one of the greatest cities in Wyoming. You know, we have such a great city. We have that hometown feel, but yet we have the nice things that come with being one of the larger cities in Wyoming. And just thank you for being a part of it. It's an absolute blessing to be on this council and, you know, just be your ears and your mouth when it comes to the decisions in this city. So just thank you for that opportunity that you have granted me and given to me. I would just like to wish you all a Merry Christmas and happy holidays and just remember what this time of year is about, what it's for and why we celebrate.
All right. That brings us to our holiday lightning round. The lightning round is just a series of quick, short questions designed to get to know you a little better.
Okay.
And for the holiday lightning round, I have given all the questions sort of a festive twist. Are you ready?
I am ready.
All right. Eggnog or hot chocolate?
Hot chocolate.
All right. Gifts, giving or receiving?
100% giving.
All right. When you get presents, do you try to guess what they are? Or do you like to be surprised when you open them? Or to put it another way, shaking or not shaking?
Definitely not shaking.
Oh.
Now, years earlier, I would have definitely been a shaking. I might even have peeled the tape off of the present.
Sure. But now that surprise is part of the enjoyment.
Absolutely.
All right. And do you tear the wrapping paper off or do you save it carefully?
Tear it apart.
Which of Santa's reindeer would you say is your favorite? If you need help remembering the names of the reindeer, they are Dasher, Dancer, Prancer, Vixen, Comet, Cupid, Donner, Blitzen, and if you recall, the most famous reindeer of all, Rudolph.
It's definitely the most famous reindeer of all Rudolph because just so many wonderful childhood memories of Rudolph and the cartoon and definitely the history there.
Home for the holidays or far away you roam?
We are home for the holidays.
Perfect. And what would you like for Christmas this year? It's a tough question. I know. It's a big question.
It is a tough question and a big question. And you know, there's nothing physical that I want or need. And I think most importantly for me, it would be just health and family and more grandbabies around the house.
Sure. And Christmas dinner, turkey or ham?
Smoked turkey.
Ooh. All right. Do you make New Year's resolutions?
I actually do not. I, back in the day, I would say I probably did, but they were very short-lived and so I just tried to live that life.
Sure. One day at a time. You take it as you come.
One day at a time, definitely take it as it comes. And you know, just most importantly, try to be a good person, a good husband, a good father and a good grandfather.
Sure. All right. And on New Year's Eve, do you stay up until midnight or do you fall asleep early?
I intentionally fall asleep early and go to bed early every New Year's Eve.
Sure. All right. Well, thank you so much, Councilman Karzrude, for coming in and talking with us today.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. We all have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
You too. Up next, we've got City Council Ward 2 Representative Billy Montgomery. And are you ready, Billy?
Uh, yes, sir, I am.
All right. What would you say was the best part of being on the city council in the last year?
I'd say the past year that the council, we accomplished quite a bit and, but I would say working with the staff and employees on different projects is probably the best part of being on the council.
All right. What is the thing that the city did in the last year that you are most proud of?
Ooh, there's been a lot that city has done to be proud of. The one that comes to mind is the council and staff setting goals and projects for the next five years.
Sure. All right. And what are your hopes for next year?
Well, I want to keep the city moving forward and I hope we find more uses for coal, keep that going.
Oh, sure. And is there anything, before we wrap up our regular questions, is there anything else you would like to say to the citizens of Gillette?
You know, there is. I'd like to first, you know, wish everybody a Merry Christmas and the best in the new year. And I'd also like to say that, you know, this is a season for joy and happiness, but for some it's a difficult time of the year. And I'd like to tell those folks that if you find yourself in this place, reach out for help and there's no shame in asking for help. You can call the crisis line at 307-688-5555 or text 988. And if you find yourself in that place, please reach out for help.
Yeah, it is really important, especially at this time of year where a lot of people struggle with that.
Sure.
So, yeah, definitely if you, if you find yourself in a dark place this holiday season, reach out for help.
You bet.
All right. And that brings us to our holiday lightning round. So these are just fun, short questions with more of a festive theme.
Okay.
Are you ready?
Yes.
All right. Eggnog or hot chocolate?
Ooh, eggnog.
Oh. Gifts, giving or receiving?
I like giving.
Oh, yeah. When you get presents, do you try to guess what your presents are? Or do you like to be surprised when you open them? Or to put it another way, do you shake your presents or not shake your presents?
You know, I like to guess and I'm definitely a shaker.
Sure. And when you open your presents, do you tear the wrapping paper? Or do you open it carefully so you can save it for later?
I would usually rip right into them.
Sure.
Tear them up, yeah.
All right. Which of Santa's reindeer would you say is your favorite? Uh, if you need help remembering, they are Dasher, Dancer, Prancer, Vixen, Comet, Cupid, Donner, Blitzen, or if you recall, the most famous reindeer of all, Rudolph.
Uh, that's a tough one there. Uh, they all serve a particularly good job there, but I'd have to go
Vital parts of the team.
Yeah, yeah. And I'd have to go with Rudolph, I guess.
Sure. Home for the holidays or far away you roam?
I like home.
Sure. What would you like for Christmas this year?
I'll tell you what I would really like, would see peace on earth and goodwill towards men this year.
Sure. Turkey or ham?
That's another tough one. I like that ham though.
Oh, sure. Christmas dinner?
Yep.
All right. Do you make New Year's resolutions?
No, I, I did, but I never could keep them. So I did, I don't do it no more.
All right. And on New Year's Eve, do you stay up until midnight or do you fall asleep early?
I sit there and I nap a little bit, but I always like to see the ball drop.
Oh, sure. All right. Well, that is our holiday lightning round. Billy, thank you so much for coming in and thank you for serving on our city council in this last year.
Well, thank you for allowing me to come here. And I tell you, I really enjoy the city councils. As I tell people, it's the best job I've ever had. So thank you.
Welcome back to the Let's Talk Gillette Holiday Special episode. Right now, I'm sitting down with City Council Ward 3 Councilman Nathan McCleveland. I guess to start with, what would you say was the best part of being on the city council in the past year?
Well, I think the best part of being on the city council this year has been getting to work with some of the new city councilmen, kind of being able to be involved in some of the great projects. It's always an honor to represent the citizens of Ward 3 and of the city of Gillette. And we've just got a lot of good things going on in the city and it's great to be a part of that process.
All right. And what thing that the city did in the last year, would you say you were most proud of?
Yeah, we've done a lot of great things at the city this year. I think one of the coolest things we've done is we've got the city pool project going again. We're going to start working on that. We've done a lot of things to enhance public safety in the city of Gillette. We've helped the police department get some equipment, some personnel that they've needed. They're working on their accreditation with Kalia. I think that's going to be great. We've done some things with the fire department to help them get some funding so that they can get fully staffed, get equipment they need. That's been great. And we passed the malicious harms ordinance and I think, you know, that was controversial, but from my standpoint, I think that was a great thing we did this year in the city of Gillette.
All right. And what are your hopes for next year?
Yeah, I think my hopes for next year are to continue moving our city ahead. I think we've continued to be a leader economically in the state and we've looked at some ways to, to make sure we maintain that position. You know, our city council is dedicated to doing that. We're going to keep working on that. I think, you know, any project we can find that, that helps us do that, we're going to evaluate it, see if it works for the city of Gillette and we're going to, you know, dig in, get to work and keep being a leader in this state. And I'm proud to be a part of it.
All right. And here, the last of our regular questions is just, is there anything you'd like to say to the citizens of Gillette?
I'd just like to say to the citizens of Gillette, have a Merry Christmas, have a Happy New Year. Again, I'm very proud to be representing Ward 3 in the city of Gillette. It's, it's a great honor. I love doing it and I just look forward to 2024 and everything we have going in the city. We have a great group of citizens and we have a great city. And again, I wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
All right. And that brings us to our holiday lightning round. So the holiday lightning round is just like the regular lightning round, except I've rewritten all the questions with sort of a festive twist.
All right.
Are you ready?
I am ready.
All right. Eggnog or hot chocolate?
Hot chocolate.
Gifts, giving or receiving?
Ooh, that's a tough one. I'll go with giving.
Sure. Do you try to guess what your presents are? Or do you like to maintain the surprise? Or to put it another way, shaking or not shaking?
Oh, shaking. I absolutely try to guess.
Sure. And when you open your presents, do you tear the wrapping paper or do you save it carefully?
No, I tear that wrapping paper.
All right. Which of Santa's reindeer would you say is your favorite? If you need a reminder, they are Dasher, Dancer, Prancer, Vixen, Comet, Cupid, Donner, Blitzen, and if you recall, the most famous reindeer of all, Rudolph.
Blitzen.
Oh, okay. Sure. Home for the holidays or far away you roam?
Home for the holidays.
Sure. What would you like for Christmas this year?
Oh, man, that's a great question. Um, I think I'd like to just, just have a good, a nice Christmas with my family and have a relaxing time.
Sure. And for Christmas dinner, turkey or ham?
Prime rib.
Oh. You know, you're actually not the first one who said that. And honestly, I have to agree. I think I would rather have prime rib rather than turkey or ham. Uh, do you make New Year's resolutions?
I do.
All right. And on New Year's Eve, do you stay up until midnight or do you fall asleep early?
I fall asleep early.
Sure. All right. Well, that brings us to the end of our holiday lightning round. Uh, thank you so much, Councilman McCleveland, for coming in and talking to us today.
Thank you and have a great Christmas.
You too. Today, I'm doing another council holiday year end wrap-up interview with City Council Ward 3 Councilwoman Heidi Gross. And what would you say was the best part of being on the city council in the last year?
Good morning, Jason. For me, I think the best part was just getting to understand the city operations. I've really enjoyed meeting and getting to know my fellow council members more this year and then also meeting all the different employees at this city. And it's just been a joy to work with them and get to know them all better.
Okay. And what thing that the city did in the last year are you most proud of?
There are a couple of things, even though it wasn't a pleasant thing to do. I think it was important that we did the utility rate increases because that's going to be really important for our future growth here in the city, especially to cover the costs for the wastewater treatment plant in particular. So I'm very proud of that. And I'm also very proud of the housing study that we approved. I think that was really good information for us to, to have so we'd be able to make I think that was really good information for us to, to have, so we'd be able to make better decisions moving forward. Basically, I'm just really proud of the work that we've done to promote Gillette and make sure that we are investing in things that are going to be good for our community in the years to come.
Sure. And what are your hopes for the upcoming year?
Well, my hopes for the upcoming year are to continue to invest in those projects that make sense for us as a community and to keep looking forward. So Gillette continues to be a great place to run a business and raise families.
All right. And is there anything else, before we move on to our special holiday lightning round, anything else you'd like to say to the citizens of Gillette?
Yes, absolutely. I wanted to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and happy holiday season. I hope you have a wonderful time with your friends and family. And I would especially like to thank the citizens in Ward 3. I appreciate your support very, very much. So thank you and happy holidays.
All right. And that brings us to our special holiday lightning round.
Okay.
So these are just some quick questions I wrote, some sort of festive, short questions.
All right.
Are you ready?
I'm ready.
All right. Eggnog or hot chocolate?
Hot chocolate.
All right. Gifts, giving or receiving?
For me, it's giving, especially when it comes to my grandchildren. I tend to go overboard when I'm buying presents for them, but I love to buy presents.
Sure. Uh, when you get presents, do you try to guess what they are or do you like to be surprised?
I like to be surprised.
All right. And when you get them and you are surprised, do you tear the wrapping paper open or do you unfold it carefully to save it for later?
I tear it open. I am not a gift wrapping paper recycler.
All right. Which is your favorite of Santa's reindeer? If you need a reminder of who they are, they are Dasher, Dancer, Prancer, Vixen, Comet, Cupid, Donner, Blitzen, and if you recall, the most famous reindeer of all, Rudolph.
It has to be Rudolph because that is my all-time favorite Christmas movie as well, is Rudolph the Red-Nosed Reindeer.
Sure. All right. Uh, home for the holidays or far away you roam?
We always stay home. That way I can have my children and grandchildren over for the holidays. So we'll be staying here.
All right. What would you like for Christmas this year?
Oh, my goodness. I am so blessed. I have so much. I guess what I would like for Christmas this year is just continued well-being and prosperity for the citizens here in Gillette and for my family, of course.
All right. For Christmas dinner, turkey or ham?
Turkey.
All right. Do you make New Year's resolutions?
I do make New Year's resolutions. I write them all down on a piece of paper and I do that on New Year's Eve.
All right. And on New Year's Eve, do you stay up until midnight or do you fall asleep early?
I fall asleep early. That happens to be my daughter's birthday as well. So for the last 30 years, I've either been taking care of my daughter or now it's taking care of my grandchildren. So my daughter can celebrate her birthday, so.
All right. Well, thank you very much for coming today.
Well, happy holidays, Jason. Thank you for having me.
Yep, thank you. Welcome back to the Let's Talk Gillette holiday special episode. Right now, I'm sitting down with Mayor Shay Lunval. And we're going to talk a little bit about the last year and, and then move on to our festive holiday lightning round. Are you ready?
I am ready.
Perfect. What would you say was the best part of being on the council last year or head of council, as it were?
Sure. Man, I think really recalibrating and developing a team to really start working together to, to move some of the, the action items forward. And, you know, it took a little while and there's some rough patches there at the beginning, but we got through it and it's exciting. Great time to be on council and looking forward to the next three years for sure.
All right. And what thing that the city did last year, would you say you were most proud of?
Most proud of? Man, I think that one of the things that I'm most proud of is really putting the council in the room and really having a discussion about what projects as a council we want to accomplish over the next year to five years.
Sure.
In a long, short term and long term. And that hadn't been done. And oftentimes we had it where it was driven by staff. And I feel for the first time, it was really collaborating amongst the council and putting our heads together to try to solve problems of what we're trying to do as a team here.
Sure. So your big goal-setting meeting that you guys did?
Yeah, exactly.
Sure. All right. And what are your hopes for the next year or what were the priorities from the goal-setting meeting?
Yeah, so staying on track with those, but still continuing to have my head on a swivel, to look for opportunities to continue to position Gillette to be in the conversations for, for growing, for having new businesses come, having local businesses expand. That's really been one of the main platforms that I ran on. And I feel we're finally starting to see this momentum ball continue to pick up speed. And it's exciting. And sometimes you don't have a crystal ball, but it's certainly something that we continue to strive for and try to leave it better than what I got it.
All right. And just the last one of our, our regular questions before we start the holiday lightning round. Is there anything you'd like to say directly to the citizens of Gillette?
Absolutely. I, I just want to tell you guys, thank you. Thank you for the support. Thank you for the encouragement. Thank you for being a part of something and helping me rebuild that trust within government. It's never going to be perfect, but we are certainly striving for excellence every day. And we're trying to get 1% better every day. And I think that's something that with your guys' continued help and the partnerships and the council's really trying to continue to put our heads together, to work together, we're going to continue to accomplish some really big things coming up. So thank you again. And I just sincerely wish you all a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
All right. Perfect. And that brings us to our holiday lightning round. So this is just like the regular lightning round we did before, except I've rewritten the questions, uh, with sort of a festive theme in mind. Are you ready?
I'm ready when you are.
All right. Eggnog or hot chocolate?
Eggnog.
Gifts, giving or receiving?
Giving.
And when you do get gifts, do you try to guess what they are? Or do you try to maintain the surprise for when you open them? So to put it another way, gifts, shaking or not shaking?
I am definitely trying to guess what the presents are. Yeah.
It's a fun part of the experience, I think. And when you, when you get gifts and you're trying to guess what they are, when you do go to open them, do you tear the wrapping paper off or do you carefully remove it so you can fold it up and use it later?
Well, I want to rip it off. My wife, however, wants to save it. So I'm trying to balance this.
Sure.
Between the two. So can I say somewhere in the middle?
Sure. Yeah, that makes sense. It, it's a situation. All right. Which of Santa's reindeer would you say is your favorite? If you need help remembering, they are Dasher, Dancer, Prancer, Vixen, Comet, Cupid, Donner, Blitzen, and if you recall, the most famous reindeer of all, Rudolph.
You know, you don't hear much about the other ones and what their character or what their personalities are like.
It's true.
So it's hard for me to really answer that, but I'm just going to pick one. How about that? And I'm going to go with Dancer.
Dancer, sure.
I don't mind tearing up some rugs. I don't mind having some fun.
All right. Home for the holidays or far away you roam?
I don't mind a good holiday at home, but I, I'm a traveler.
Sure.
And I don't mind roaming.
Sure. What would you like for Christmas this year?
I would like, I think at this point in my stage of my life, though I'm certainly young, just a family to be together.
Sure.
Enjoy the time together.
Yes. All right. And Christmas dinner, turkey or ham?
Ham.
Oh, sure. Do you make New Year's resolutions?
No.
And on New Year's Eve, do you stay up until midnight or do you fall asleep early?
Well, I try very hard and, uh, generally when the streetlights come on, I'm out.
Sure.
So, but I, uh, certainly try to give it my best effort every year. I enjoy what I can and when I can.
Sure. And that brings us to the end of our holiday lightning round. Mayor Lunval, thank you so much for, for sitting down with us today and, uh, Merry Christmas. Happy holidays.
Absolutely, man. Thank you for what you do here at the city. Yeah, thank you and have a Merry Christmas.
You too. Let's Talk Gillette is a production of Gillette Public Access Television and The City of Gillette. For more information on city operations, visit the city's website, GilletteWY.gov, or follow The City of Gillette on Facebook or Instagram.